If anyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Corr, could you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Seig.
Here.
Alderman Malamoy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner. Here. Thank you very much. We have no recognitions or appointments. We move right to public comment. And again, in public comment, just wanted to clarify if you want specific answers to questions, or you want to engage in dialogue, or if you want some specific problems solved, we do have the regular mayor's open house from 4:30 to 5:30 every Friday before a regular city council meeting. And we did have actually a couple of you who are, including Gary Lambert, in the audience who were there on Friday, and I certainly welcome you to do that. This is basically a point where we have public comment where we do not respond. So again, if you want answers, come on on Fridays. First, we're going to start actually with Gary Lambert, followed by Scott Steimerly, and then Angela Scott. Those are the first three, and then we'll go through this so that we can get everybody in, in time.
Good evening. I'd like to give a shout out to Jim Karch. I stopped in the convenience center last week. Really looks nice. Job well done. I'd like to express my appreciation for the council members who opposed the ordinance. I was especially concerned with Section 6. To me, that could have been interpreted as allowing for special consideration for illegal aliens. In an earlier version, it was spelled out that way. But just a couple of quotes here that relate to that issue that I've read over the last week or two. Mr. Obador, Mexican President, his quote, "The migrants of the world who by necessity must abandon their towns to find life in the United States, it's a human right we will defend." Keith Adelson, Deputy Chair of the DNC. In a recent demonstration, he was wearing a T-shirt stating, "I don't believe in borders." Tom Perez, DNC Chair. Socialist candidates are the future of the party. We have politicians and activists at both the national and local level calling for the elimination of ICE. This past weekend, you had Rahm Emanuel supporting, and they shut down the Dan Ryan Expressway. We have a local group posting on Facebook threatening to do the same for Veterans Parkway. To me, that is mob rule. That's anarchy. I see the letters N-I-O-T. I believe that. Not in our town. There's no room for that type of action in Bloomington. If we want a sanctuary city, might I suggest a gun sanctuary city? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we move to Scott Steimerly, and then Angela Scott, and Elizabeth Gruber.
Thank you for the opportunity. I guess I noticed that on 25 News this morning, that you were getting the feeling that there was little in support for the welcoming city ordinance, which is true. I wish this council would uphold the oath that they really took to uphold the ordinances of the city of Bloomington's laws of the state of Illinois. And Terry, we can start with you. You're one of the first people to violate that trust. And, you know, I'm so disappointed in all of you, I can't tell you. That you think the laws apply to everybody but you. And take the money that we spend on those lousy fireworks and put that right in the cotton-picking roads that are crumbling underneath our eyes. Or don't you really care? I guess the thing that bothers me is there was someone that they had a pet that was missing because of those lousy fireworks going off. We don't have to have those. It doesn't do a bit for signing the Declaration of Independence. That's all it was for. And Terry, you know that as well as I do. I guess, you know, if an individual comes into the country illegally, then I would suggest you ship them back to where they came from. They have their children here, fine. They're natural-born citizens. If you want to take them back, take them back with you. I had a sister-in-law that she got her, came from another country, got her citizenship legally. She was naturalized and went through the process. These people are crawling under the fence and they're expecting you to say, "Okay, come on in, people." You know, at some point, we're going to say enough is enough. And, you know, we've seen plenty go on in this town. And I would like to tell Mr. Asmuson what a fine job he's done as interim city manager, and I'm very disappointed that he did not even get, that he did not get the job. And Jim, regarding the garbage, we saw that the automated carts were going to rapid, supposed to reduce the costs. Then I see that the automated carts, the middle size and large size went up. You fortunately left the small ones alone. Today, this time, you hit everything. And, you know, I just wonder where the taxes are going to stop? Or don't you have an answer for that? You just keep spending and keep taxing? Is that right, Terry?
Thank you very much. We move right along to Angela Scott, Elizabeth Gruber, and Leon Cabe.
I'm Angela Scott. I would like to thank council or whoever made the decision that this welcoming city ordinance was not a good idea, because it's not. And I want to talk a little about, a little bit about a revolution that I'm sort of familiar with. And it ended with a guy alone in a garden. And then he ended up on a cross. It wasn't a bunch of people. Well, the people that were yelling "Barabbas" are the ones that ended up getting Christ crucified. As a Christian, this community is horrible. I am part of the problem. I get that. Because I'm so angry and I'm so furious, and everyone's calling for violence, and everybody wants to crucify the wrong person. It's Harry. I don't know how we can get rid of you, but you must go. You are absolutely the worst leader I have ever seen in any capacity. It is, it's an embarrassment, and it is shameful. And the division in this community breaks my heart. And when I first started coming here, I tried to talk about what was happening to our citizens. And this, this welcoming city is not saving a single child that's being caged at the border. It does nothing for them. It doesn't help anyone here, because we've done FOIA's and we've seen that no child in Bloomington, by a Bloomington police officer, was ripped from their family's arms, and no parents were ripped away by a Bloomington police officer. This was a political stunt. When you came back from your leave of absence, you talked about posturing. That's all you do, Terry. You make no difference. You just posture, and you ruin something that is good, and that is this community. It's, and when you sit up there and you smirk, it's shameful, Terry. I don't know. May God have mercy on you.
Thank you. Next, Leon Cabe, and then Glenn Ludwig. Oh, excuse me, Elizabeth Gruber. Sorry. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. We have to-
I can go.
Okay. All right. You can trade places.
Evening, council mayor. I'm coming up here today too about the disappointment or the poor leadership capabilities among all of you, especially Mr. Mayor. I just want to read here what the newspaper had and what you also said, Mayor. And then I can just ask a question here. However, it is clear there is not support on the council for the ordinance that was to be considered this evening. Therefore, I am canceling tonight's meeting. It's amazing that it was set up as a special meeting. And I don't know all the legalities, but, you know, public affairs, when something's set up, usually you got to follow through with it. Especially, I guess, when it's on a full agenda, but being a special meeting is probably an exception to the rule. But, so the issue is open meetings. You know, I'd like to, like to see which one of you qualify yourself to say there's not enough support. Alderman Burgess, Alderman Black, are you the only two that give support to this? Seems like that's the avenue that's going here. You know, it's just shameful that this type of political maneuvering is happening in Bloomington. So many people rant and rave about what's going on in Washington, DC. How about just look within our own community? It's uncalled for. You know, I do want to, I do want to give a shout out to Alderman Black for seeing him down at West Bloomington Revitalization Project. Aaron Schmidt, I don't know if anybody else was there. Jamie. That's good stuff. What happens to the rest of us on all this kit and kaboodle, you know? Just act like real grown-up, mature adults. Get real. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Gruber.
Elizabeth Gruber, this is kind of impromptu. If you want to hear my comments on the welcoming ordinance, you can watch Channel 10 News, because they interviewed me out there. I'm a legal immigrant, and therefore you can pretty well guess what my views are. But I'd also like to say welcome to the new city manager. But what I'd like to know is, have any of you taken ECON 101? We wasted a lot of money on David Hales. And when I see the salary and the benefits given to a city manager, then I hope that this gentleman will give us our money back in some way, whether through doing something with straightening out the Coliseum, the Pepsi ice rink, the naming of that. There are so many things that need to be cleaned up that weren't done by David Hales. And I hope that the new gentleman will go ahead and attack these things and earn the money that these citizens are going to be paying him. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Ludwig, Erin Lanuv, and Regina Nolan.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm going to change the direction just a little bit. I don't have a complaint tonight. I do thank you all who read that email I talked about at the last meeting. I hope you read it. By golly, you might have even read the one this afternoon that I sent by mistake. So if you haven't read it yet, well, take a look tomorrow. It's, it's not a biggest chunk of change than my first one where I talked about that you need to run the government of Bloomington like a business. And I know probably some of that's still stuck in your throat a little bit, because that was a tough one to swallow, I would imagine. But keep chewing, you'll get it down after a while. The one I'm talking about now, and I'm not going to talk about it now because I've already sent that out, and I hope the rest of you will look at your email, is it's a lot easier to handle. And I think it'll be a refreshing change that you can very easily implement, although I know there's so many codes in this country, in this city, that there's probably a code on where you sit. And so if that's the case, well, you're going to have to change the code if you follow what I suggest. I've got just a minute left. I've got a great neighbor that I just got to know recently. Sitting right back there. Gus, stand up a minute. Am I going to introduce Gus? I guess I can. I just did it. Gus Gonzalez is a really unique guy. He's not only, he's standing, he's not only a citizen of the United States, he's a citizen in Colombia. And he spends, I don't get to see him too often, because he spends half his time in Colombia, because he teaches government and those types of things, and management, at the University of the Andes, headquartered in Bogota, Colombia, a city of eight million people. And so he's down there half the year and half the year he's here. He tells me that I should be glad that I've got ancestors that go back 150 years maybe in this country, and he's real proud that he's got ancestors that go back 400 years. We are a country of immigrants. That's all I'm going to say. If you get a chance to know Gus, he's a good guy to know. He's got some really unique perspectives on things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erin, and then Regina.
There ain't no illegal people on stolen land. And if you think there are, your rent check's late. You need to make out the check to the Kickapoo people and mail that to like Oklahoma or Mexico or something because that's where your ancestors forced them to go. Yeah. Uh, you got the bigot crowd here tonight. The few of you that are for this, I really appreciate you standing up and trying to smite the fascists because, uh, we, we really don't need the police helping out President Golden Shower's Gestapo force, which is really starting to look like some Nazi Gestapo force. So, uh, that's, that's real. And people really are getting ready to start resistance cells. You know, we're getting organized. It's a real thing. These people are being violent. They're accusing us of being violent and all that we're doing really is saying, "Hey, you guys are a bunch of jerks" and what have you, and, uh, driving this stupid civility conversation when you got, uh, this crotchety old orange dude up there saying all kinds of despicable things. You know, when his Trump rally was here in town, he was like telling people, "Oh, you know, if you hit one of these protesters, I'll like pay for you." Well, I got kidney punched trying to protest this stuff. So, I mean, they're, they're actively violent. And, you know, whatever weird stuff y'all got going on up here with this stuff, you might be tired of this crap, but we really do have problems with the police. We really do have problems with this ICE stuff. It really is a stolen country. Y'all need to do something. If not, you're helping the Nazis.
Uh, thank you. The next is Regina Nolan.
Um, I guess I'll stay in line with the welcoming city thing here. What I'd like to say is, Terry, you have divided this community more than anybody I've seen in the past 25 years that I've lived here. I moved here from Chicago to get away from this type of thing, and you're bringing it all back into this small community. Everybody got along. I see people preaching hate toward each other. And a lot of them are professing that they are Democrat, democratic socialists that are aligned with the coalition that was pulling for this legal immigration ordinance. And I don't know about anybody else, but we live in a republic. And you take an oath for the Constitution, the United States. The United States is a republic. It's not a socialist country. And to have them coming in here and lobbying for things like the illegal immigrant ordinance, it's disgusting. It's horrible. And to have my mayor out there, standing there with signs with the socialists is even worse. Front page of the newspaper. Come on. You know, this is just ridiculous. And I guess that's all I've got to say. I just hope that you stop and take a look at what's really going on here because I hear violent things coming from people and lies and it's just getting out of control. And I'd like to see the city get back to where it was. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? 7K, Mayor. 7K by Alderman Mathie. Okay. Uh, other, any other items? Is there a, um, motion to approve the consent agenda, excuse me, consent agenda with the exception of item 7K?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Howman. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, if you'll go ahead and vote for the, on the consent agenda as presented? The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And then I will turn to Alderman Mathie about item 7K.
I just need to recuse myself. I'm a member of the Sunrise Rotary Group, so.
Is there a motion to approve item 7K as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Painter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, if everyone will go ahead and vote on that item? The motion passes eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and I think we can probably let Alderman The next one is item 8A, and this is Presentation Discussion Update and Direction Regarding Downtown Wayfinding Signage as Presented by the Public Works Department. And at this point, um, we have a presentation by Mr. Karch. And that's five minutes, and city council discussion's budget is approximately 10. And what staff is looking for is some potential direction on downtown wayfindage, uh, downtown wayfinding signage. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just briefly, I'll turn this over in just a second. I'd like to introduce to you David Park. He is the Downtown Signage Committee Chairman. And then also Kevin Cothe, our City Engineer for Bloomington. Uh, if you'd like to take over the presentation, please.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, just click the sign. Okay. Okay. Um, as of last December, um, the council approved the historic signage with the brick base and the backlighting with the teal and, um, and the, and the change order for KMA to create the bid documents. The Public Works temporarily installed the sign, which we, the sign, you might recall, we brought here at the meeting last December, and it was out on East Street, as you can see right there. And then in April, the Public Works sent wayfinding part, sent wayfinding part of the project out for bid. There were several plan holders, but we did not receive a single bid, unfortunately. The Public Works plans to take the entire project as a package of both to, out this summer, with an exception that, assuming that this will attract the more bidders. And these are the approved designs. These are the vehicle directional signs, and, um, those are, with people to give you an idea of the size of them. They're all with, um, reflective lettering. And this is, um, the archway, gateway archway. And then we have the, um, gateway, um, the LED and the just regular gateway entrance sign. And we have a proposed locations, which city staff worked long and hard and we went through. We actually did a tour of all these locations on a bus with the entire, most of the committee. And, um, we've made some tweaks and some changes to it, but we've figured out pretty much where everything needs to be as far as that goes. And these are outward locations that are going to be bringing people from further away into the downtown area. And there's an example of where the, that gateway arch will be on Center Street coming And this sign will be backlit and it's got the 1830 of the year the city was founded. And these are the locations for the LED, um, gateway signs. One which would be just right out here on the, in that park area as it comes on, as it turns into East Street from, um, from Main. And this also would be located at the intersection of Market Street and, um, Madison. And it'll be in an angle so it could be seen from both directions as you're entering downtown. And that's it. So we're just trying to give you an update on where we are and this is where we are today. So we're ready to put it out to bid as one package this summer.
One question, there was town council meeting, shouldn't that be city council?
Right, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just, um, well-
Any questions? Alderman Schmidt, who represents downtown, and then we'll go to Alderman Black.
Just a question about why you think there were no bidders? I mean, did you get any inkling about, were these local companies or?
Well, this type of project is probably going to involve local companies as well as national companies. Obviously, a local contractor is probably going to install the concrete foundations and that type of thing. We talked with KMA Design, who is the consultant on the project, and they felt that we needed to give it a longer timeframe for bidding. Uh, we bid this with eight other projects that Public Works had out in April. We had bids on all the other projects, but we didn't get any bidders on this project, even though we had a number of plan holders. And, uh, they suggested this time, instead of our standard two-week window for bidding, that, that we expand it to three or four weeks to give everybody more of a chance because there's a lot of coordination issues between different contractors. For instance, the LED monument gateways, that LED component comes from a different company than the company that would assemble the sign. It might be a different company that actually installs the brick base and that type of thing. So there's a lot of subcontractors apparently involved in this type of thing. And so it takes a little bit more coordination, so they recommended giving it more time. And having the gateways in with the wayfinding signs makes it a bigger, more attractive package to bring in other bidders.
Alderman Schmidt, also, if I, if I can make one note on that, what happened was we were doing this in two pieces because we had a amount of money that was budgeted in last year's budget, so we wanted to get that spent before the end of the fiscal year. So we moved forward with half of that. Well, as it turns out, we were able to roll that money into the budget for this year. So we've got the money from last year and this year together, and this way we can give it more time because we're not now up against the pressure of trying to spend it before the end of the fiscal year. We were worried about the budget last year and we thought we might lose it, depending on how tight the budget was. But since we were able to get through the budget okay, we were able to roll that through this year. So now we have this year's money and last year's money together and more time to bid it. So we won't be in such a hurry.
Thank you. And thank you, Steve. Alderman Black.
Thank you. Um, and I appreciate the presentation. Can you walk me through what direction you're seeking from us this evening? Is it thumbs up? Is it suggestions? What is it you're looking for?
We're looking for any suggestions or thumbs up. Basically, this has all already been approved. We're putting it together. We, um, just, after the, when we did the branding mixed in with it the last time, it didn't go over well. So we just want transparency showing you where we're at right now before we put it out to bid.
Gotcha.
Simple.
Okay. So to that end, I kind of want to give you at least my perspective on where we're at. And your point is well-taken that the last time this came out, I can't remember my, my phone ringing off the hook as much as it was about the branding than any other issue that we've had in front of the city. What I'm seeing here looks really good. Um, I, I've been traveling around a little bit and I always take note of what other communities are doing, especially ones that are similar size. And I was in St. Joseph, Missouri this weekend, which is about the same size as Bloomington. And their downtown looks awesome. They have all of their, their signage pretty crystal clear on what they're doing. Uh, and their CVB is located in their downtown as well, which is something of note. Um, I, you know, for me, I, I think this is great. We should move forward. The LED board, I am not as, as pumped about, so if we need to put that on a back burner to save money to get kind of the arches and the initial push done, I, I think that's a prioritization piece that I would recommend. You know, but I, I think there's a value in that. Almost all communities do that sort of a thing. And I can hear Alderman sagging my head, asking, "How are you going to pay for these wonderful signs?" And, and, you know, half a million dollars a year. And to me, I'll just say publicly that I think any downtown improvements now and moving forward need to be funded out of a special fund that's raised through tax revenue from downtown. Um, and I'd be willing, and I'm very interested, and you'll be seeing me bring up in a committee of the whole in the near future, a way for us to explore how to fund downtown improvement projects with special service area, what legal options that we have to fund these sorts of things. Because if we're not investing in our downtown, it's, it's all for naught. And, um, I'm passionate about it. I think this looks great. I think it's, we should move forward. We have the money, let's do it. Uh, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Alderman Mathie.
Um, I was at a committee meeting. Thank you, Dave and Kevin and everybody else who worked on this too. Um, I was at a committee meeting, and I know one of the things that was talked about, and I just wanted to publicly say this or just reaffirm this, is that there are no private businesses on any of these signs, right? Because one of the things I repeatedly heard from people is like, "Well, why are we putting, spending city money on signage for businesses?" And we're not. We're pointing out historical landmarks, city, county, parking, things of that nature, but there's no businesses listed on these.
They're, um, they're going to be like the Coliseum, the McLean County Arts Center, Bloomington Foreign Arts Center, that type of thing. They will be, but they're not publicly owned.
Perfect. I just wanted to reaffirm that because people-
That came up with a couple, there were a couple names that surfaced and we pretty much took, put that, put that away right away.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I had too, Mr. Karch has already, if you've been to the recycle area down here around Stone, he's already duped us with a sign up.
Yes. To great accolades. And, yeah.
Yes.
If Terry Lambert here, he brought that up actually at our mayor's open house to several nodding heads.
Right.
But, and we-
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? And so are we suggesting stay the course? I think that's what we're suggesting.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, resolution, excuse me, consideration resolution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Bloomington and the Bloomington Normal Convention and Tourist Bureau and the BN CVB to provide economic development services in the amount of $475,000 during the city's fiscal year 2019 as requested by the Community Development Department. And we have a brief presentation by Mr. Mart and then a council discussion.
Very brief by Mr. Mart. And then we'll, I'll invite Crystal Howard to give up a presentation on the Bloomington Normal Convention and Tourism Bureau. Over the last several weeks, we'd had the opportunity to review some of our economic development partners, some of the memorandum of understanding and resolutions for funding support over the next year. Most of those had a term of one year, and this proposal would also have a term of one year. Um, the Convention and Tourism Bureau was, serves as our certified Convention and Visitors Bureau through the state for McLean County. They started the organization back in 2002. Initially, there was a five-year agreement for funding support from both the town, the county, and the city. That agreement was extended for another 10 years through December of 2018, or 2017, I'm sorry. And so over the last six months, we've been without an agreement of, for support of this Economic Development Agency that serves our tourism interests. I'd like to briefly go through some of the outlines of the agreement. We talked before about the term and the, and the long-term commitment that the City of Bloomington has had with, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The, the city utilizes a portion of our hotel multi-tax receipts to support the Convention and Visitors Bureau. For many years, we did have that intergovernmental agreement, and that has since lapsed. If you look at your resolution and your, along with the Exhibit A of the memorandum of understanding, you'll, you'll see that we have developed a list of activities that we would expect to be completed and undertaken by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, mostly branding and marketing and of city events, and also maintaining quality relationships with our, the state and, and local businesses. So those are some of the things that we can use as benchmarks to see that, that we're getting services and from the funding support that we're being offered. So at this time, I'd like to turn over the podium to Crystal Howard of the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good evening. Mayor Renner, City Council, City Staff. If I can get this going, yeah? I appreciate getting the time this evening to share with you the work of the Bureau. And if you recall, last spring, I did send this to all the council members. This is a year in review. I'd like to touch base on this just for a few minutes, and then I'd like to share with you what we'd like to do with the funds that you're hopefully going to allocate this evening. Basically, the Bloomington Normal Area Convention and Visitors Bureau mission is to enhance the region's economic vitality, sustainability, and quality of life by marketing the county as a compelling destination. And what a delight that is. We enjoy marketing this area. The staff and I enjoy it. We feel like we're bringing in the visitors, and you'll see a little bit about that. In the past year, as the state of Illinois has a grant, and it is the state hotel tax. This grant is something that I apply for every year, and they make up 31% of our budget. The City of Bloomington makes up 37% of our budget, and then you can see that we have other revenues coming from the Town of Normal, the Sports Commission, and other revenues.
Go lower, please.
Sure. Is that better? So here's what we do. Our office last year was able to bring in 220,000 visitors into the area, representing 44,611 rooms. And the economic impact, the estimated economic impact- And the economic impact, the estimated economic impact of that was over $6 million, almost $7 million. The hotel tax dollars that we received from the town and the city was $693,000. So if you take that into the estimated economic impact, you're getting a return on your investment of $10.04 for every dollar you've invested in the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Here's how the market segments go. Last year, we booked 82 groups in tourism, 69 conventions, and 47 sports groups. That makes the total about 198 groups into the area. Our major publications is our visitor guide. We print about 40,000 of these a year. They go to all of our conventions, our tour groups, to our universities. They're a resource for our corporations. We also have a nice planning guide that is utilized to bring in meetings and conventions and sporting events. And I might add in that area is, we're not getting phone calls into our office. We are the people calling out to bring in those groups into the area. I can tell you that even though we have a wonderful community, it is our office going out alongside with our hoteliers, alongside with our universities, bringing these groups in. But some of the funds that we use are for advertising, quite a bit of our funds are used for advertising. We were in 268 publications last year with a distribution of 2.9 million people that were able to see something on the Bloomington Normal Area. I brought a couple of examples. The Food Traveler is Epiphany Farms there, restaurant. Route 66 is huge in our advertising. We also do a lot with our golf courses. There we have Grossinger Motors. And then we also do radio announcements for the local events and billboards to welcome our groups, to welcome the events that we have in town as well. We have a newsletter that we put out. And then we also have kiosks. We have three kiosks. We have one at the Cruisin' with Lincoln on 66 Visitor's Center. I hope you've seen that. And then we have one at the David Davis Mansion, and one over at ISU Bone Student Center. Our website is very busy. We have over, last year, we had over 688,963 page views on our website. We also have the classic.com we're responsible for and Midwest Nationals.com. And here is just a little bit of, let's see if I can get this to go. These are little clips that we did. I was going to show you. Can you help me again? I can't get the clip on. It's an X, oh, yeah, it's an X, okay, this is a barrel. These are just little clips that we do advertising on Facebook. Maybe. Okay. Okay. That's fine. Okay. So here's what we're going to do next year. That was in the past year. We are going to go out and again sponsor events into our area, such as the IHSA Cheerleading, Wrestling, Dance, and Golf. Their estimated economic impact for just those are $1,628,800. Those are at Grossinger Motors Arena and our golf courses. We also have the Christian congregation. You can read here what we have, but the total sponsorships we're using funding for is $116,100. The total estimated economic impact is $4,222,600. We also do a program called Partners in Promotion, and the events that you see listed there are Bloomington events. And for each one of those, we do sponsor them. And mostly, it's about $1,000 each, for the most part. We do a lot of trade shows, $15,950 worth of trade shows. But this is where we get our tour groups. This is where we get our conventions. This is where we get the softball tournaments, our Sports Commission, Sports Illinois Huddle. We also give $50,000 to the Cruisin' with Lincoln on 66 Visitor's Center out of this funding. And they use that for marketing. Of course, we also market with them, but they have funding on their own to go out and market themselves. And we kind of collaborate on that. We're also going to get a Route 66 Visitors Kiosk. You've heard us talk about the Experience Hub. That is something that we're going to be putting in downtown, hopefully with the cooperation of the city in the next year. And then, of course, our visitor guide, which is what I just showed you. The print advertising next year, this is what we hope to advertise in. Midwest Meetings with Grossinger Motors. You can read Sports Planning Guide, American Bus Association. And that totals about $37,527 in advertising. The radio advertising is about $6,000. And then our operating expenses are divided between the town, city, and the state at 231. And that totals $475,066. And I've got 55 seconds left. So that's kind of what we're going to be spending the money on. And I suppose I can answer any questions?
Questions of Ms. Howard. Alderwoman Schmidt.
Crystal, first of all, thank you so much for what you do. I see you sort of working on the ground all the time. And Matt Hawkins for the Sports Commission as well. Hi, Matt. And I know that you're very focused on action. It's not talk, it's action. So in our packet, it's reporting that Normal's budget allocation was cut by 50%, although I think that may no longer be the case. So I wanted to ask a little bit about what happens, you know, when you have a budget cut like that from one of your partners? And how you kind of re-engineer what you do?
That's where our board has directed us to have reserve funds. And if, for instance, the state, we don't know what we're getting from the state this year yet. We've applied, but we don't know what we're getting. In the past, it's been about almost $400,000. So if that happens, and we've already got our budget set, then we'll have to go in and use our reserve funds. And our board has directed us to keep six months in reserve.
Other questions? Alderwoman Howman.
Thank you. This doesn't relate to whether or not I would support this, but is there any consideration of moving the CVB to either downtown Bloomington or uptown Normal for visibility purposes?
Well, we've had a lot of discussion on that. And we have two members of our board sitting here. And actually, there is discussion on that. We only have two, we have a two-year lease at the airport right now where our offices are. And after that, we are going to be doing some research and trying to find a place to have our offices. And yes, we would be delighted to be in a place where we can actually have visitors walk in and out.
Yeah, because the airport is kind of...
Building across the street, over by the Panograph Building, that'd be a great building.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Crystal. Excellent presentation. These are the kind of gold standard numbers and metrics that we like to see when we bring, come forward in the public and talk about how we use our investments. So well done in the presentation on that front. To Diana's question, you know, a lot of talk, I'm a, Crystal knows, I'm a big advocate for moving out of the airport. It doesn't make any sense for us to be in the airport. We want to make sure that we do it logistically and fiscally sound and that it's methodically researched before just up and moving out of the airport location. And I kind of, I saw it in a couple slides, and I know you're going fast to make sure you hit the time, but I just want to say it publicly that you've really embraced this philosophy. I think in the past, we've seen the CVB really be focused on getting heads in beds, as many room nights booked as possible. And we've done a really good job of moving towards a, other models of philosophy. So we, arms in bars, cheeks in seats, you know, whatever metaphor you want to use. You know, maybe somebody's here for a day trip. That is something that we want to be pursuing as well, and not just necessarily being tied to events that require those overnight trips. And I think you and your staff have done just a wonderful job of trying to go out and find those types of events and bring them to Bloomington Normal. And, you know, whether it's here or in Normal, all boats rise. And, you know, you look across the country, people want to go to these types of festivals, these unique events, and you and your staff have really moved to make that happen. And I want to thank you for that publicly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we do really listen to the board when they give us direction.
And the Route 66 sign that you referred to is, what, over three years and coming, but it's really cool?
It is.
Right, Jim? I'm looking at Jim because it's his department. And it's going on the, there's only, are there 30 or 50 of them? There's a limited number in the state of Illinois. And it's an Art Deco sign?
Right.
That's like six feet tall or something?
It's very similar to the one, I don't know if anybody's seen Terry Ryburn's.
Terry Ryburn's, it's one of those.
Yes, it's very similar to that. I've had lots of noises and...
And you got it at a song, $7,500, when they were going for $30,000 or $50,000 or something like that. Yeah. Anyway, thank you. Alderman Mathie.
I just wanted to voice my thanks for you guys as well, and all the stuff that you do. I mean, there are so many options of things to do in Bloomington that I saw, I'm going to call out Vicki Tilton, I saw her in the back, that Vicki and Tilton, we on a regular basis commiserate when we hear people say, "There's nothing to do in Bloomington." And I'm like, "There's so much stuff to do, I can't do it all." Just pay attention, people. I wanted to say thank you for coming to the Cultural Commission meetings and working with the Cultural Commission to find different avenues to get artist events listed on the calendar for the CVB as well. Increasing that exposure for, again, more things to do in Bloomington is important. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Matt, since he's sitting here. I got a phone call from Matt probably nine months ago with an idea. And now Matt and I are on a committee of people who are working to bring the first esports event to Bloomington. So it's a little bit outside of the normal for Bloomington, but it could be a really interesting event, and we're hoping to pull that off. So thank you to you guys for involving me in that one too.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Motion?
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Howman. If everyone will go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And Mr. Mart, I'm glad that you're here, and, because you're up next, but I believe Alderwoman Schmidt is going to recuse herself.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Thanks for all you do. Oh, Bob? Yeah. And we have consideration of the ordinance between the City of Bloomington and Illinois Wesleyan University to support the marketing development of the 800 block of North Main Street. So I'll turn that over to you.
Sure. Just a very brief presentation on the memorandum of understanding between the City of Bloomington and Illinois Wesleyan University. Back in March of 2016, the City Council had approved the purchase of approximately three acres located at 807 North Main. This tract, along with a one-acre tract owned by Illinois Wesleyan, was part of the core of the Mennonite Hospital campus in that same location. This is the first step in actively marketing the property between both parties. And that includes the requirement essentially to have a memorandum of understanding of a joint request for proposals for this redevelopment of this property, and what are the parameters that were established to allow for that to occur. This evening, Carl Teichman is here, if you had any questions, but we can kind of go through some of the elements of the memorandum of understanding. Certainly, there's the background information on some of the prior work we did. One element of that is feasibility study for this area to be TIFed. We now recognize that that is an option, but it is the option of last resort, and there may be other options for economic development incentives that might need to be brought before the City Council for consideration upon an active developer wanting to move forward on that. But we want to make sure you understand that we had done some prior TIF work on this property. There was some elements of blight and conservation here that would allow for that. And that feasibility study is done and ready to be adopted if the council wants to move forward on that element of the economic development. And certainly, we'll work with the taxing districts if that's a proposal you want to pursue. The purpose of the redevelopment agreement, one is to actively market the site, and the, what we really want the council to understand is how we're going to market this site. And those are listed under the Purpose, Section 4. The proposal will preferably include new mixed-use structures with ground for retail, commercial, and upper-story residential units. Number two, proposals should be transit-oriented and pedestrian-friendly. Number three, proposals should ideally be submitted by a single master developer with a comprehensive plan for the entire project area. Number four, proposals may include a rededication and reconstruction of East Street as public right-of-way. There was a former right-of-way north-south that essentially bisected through the property. If that becomes necessary, we could rededicate that through some sort of planning process. And proposals shall be sensitive to historic character of the adjacent Franklin Square neighborhood. So I think that's important to identify. Some of the elements of the MOU was that, at this time, we want to continue to use asphalt parking lots that are on both the city property and Wesleyan's property. And this MOU identifies that we can have that shared use. The city will take responsibility for maintenance. That would be snow removal and minor maintenance that would be necessary to maintain the parking surfaces. The other element is the existing Illinois Wesleyan buildings. They are registered under our Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, so they are responsible for having a long-term redevelopment plan for those buildings. And they are, that system is in place. They also agree to maintain their status in the program. The other thing that we wanted to briefly touch base on, and this is left generally vague, is that because the term of this agreement essentially takes us through December of 2020, we wanted to make sure that there was a commitment by Wesleyan to cause for the demolition of the property once we get an active developer interested in the property. And they have agreed to cause the demolition of the structures prior to the transfer to a developer. And that's listed under IW Buildings, Section E2. The duration of the memorandum of understanding basically takes us through December 31st of 2020. We're hoping to get the request for proposals out and submitted through this, the end of this year, and we hope to have that done by December of 2018. So it's very likely that we'll go through some sort of process where that would be a request for qualifications or request for proposals to get a qualified broker to assist us with the request for proposals. There are national and regional brokers that can handle that and help us with that process, but our intent is to move forward quickly to secure that broker and get these properties actively marketed and get this request for proposals going. The other thing is, we don't want to have a set timeframe for a request for proposals. Oftentimes, you'll get a request for proposals that will have, your submittals must be made by, in three months. I think what we would like to, and we've been working through with the staff considerations, is that we have a rolling RFP that is continuous, and that we bring those requests back to the City Council for consideration and to Wesleyan for consideration. Is this the right fit for this tract? Is this the right developer that we can work with, as opposed to just being a simple bidding process, and then whoever has the best bid or the best project out of the pool gets it? I think it's important that we find that mix that fits both parties' interests the best. And I think that's how we'd like to structure this. And again, this is the first step of having the handshake deal to move forward with a joint RFP, and then we'll move forward with selecting that broker to assist us in that RFP.
Questions? Mr. Mart? Alderman, thanks.
Thank you. And no questions, just a comment. Just, and one thing I always appreciate about my friend Scott Black is kind of the shout-out he gives to our community partners. And I just want to say, I know Carl's here. And Carl, I know the countless hours you put in, in terms of working with the City of Bloomington. And one of the things that I think I've been most appreciative of from a community perspective in my time on the council has been the partnership with Wesleyan. So again, this just continues and builds on that. So thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Mart. I appreciate that. Is there a motion then? Move, excuse me. Alderwoman Howman.
Yes, I move that we, sorry, I'm on the wrong page here.
Prove the MOU.
Yeah. Prove the MOU between the City and Illinois Wesleyan University, support the marketing and redevelopment of property.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Burgess then. Okay. At this point then, would everyone go ahead and vote on the MOU? The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And thank you so much, and thank you, Carl, as well, for all of your help and work. And I guess we could go ahead and get Alderwoman Schmidt. The next... The next item is actually included, there are no times when I discussed this with Mr. Rasmussen. The reason why this is being brought forward is not that it's not in the budget or not that it's not controversial, but we didn't, because of the amount of monies that are are being spent, we did not want it on the consent agenda, and so it is consideration to purchase of two pieces of equipment, et cetera, that are listed under D. And so I will go ahead and, anything else, Mr. Rasmussen, I should be adding?
No, but Jim Karch is here to answer any questions you may have about this equipment.
Any questions? Concerns?
I got one.
Yes.
Jim? When we were talking for the budget stuff, we were, there was an idea that was floated to running two shifts of these trucks, so that you would need fewer trucks to pick up all the trash in Bloomington, and I was just curious what happened to that idea, where we're at on that.
Yeah, it was actually an idea that staff spent quite a bit of time on. We had looked at, it really came in the end, that the amount of hours and the hope that we had in saving a lot of dollars, whenever we went and talked with other communities, whenever we talked with their own mechanics, and whenever we talked with their own employees, we did not see it as a viable, really a viable option. We haven't seen others that have done it effectively. Part of our concern with this equipment, you'll notice this was a 2012 piece of equipment. Typically, these pieces of equipment last five to seven years, and so that's, you know, before some major type of work to be done on them. And so that's not an idea that we plan on continuing to pursue, but we did, we're always trying to find ways to think outside of the box, and this is another way that sometimes you're a little bit random, but you try to find any way you can to be able to stretch the dollar. But in this case, it's not one we're planning on continuing.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll head.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Oh, excuse me. Alderwoman.
I was going to move.
Alderwoman Howman.
Yes, move to accept the purchase of the two pieces of equipment as described in...
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, go ahead, if everyone will go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Mr. Karch. We move now to city manager's discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. If you'd give me that first slide there, Mr. Spruels, and what I want to remind everybody of, all of the events we've got going on downtown, one of them is this coming Saturday is the Criterion. And so that is going on on Saturday morning, and there's more things to do in Bloomington than you can possibly do, and here's a list of all those things that we have got going on. And these are all the things that are associated with either our not-for-profits or our government association like Parks and Recreation and the Grossinger Motors. But there's many other things that are going on that are private activities that are done by private businesses in different facilities, and these are only just the ones that are government-sponsored or not-for-profit sponsored. So I'm only giving you a few of them here, and there's many more of them going in, so as Mr. Matthews said, there's more things going on, excuse me, than you can possibly get done. We can start out, there's so many things going on, it chokes me all up, you see. If anybody can, everybody can get out for the Criterion this weekend, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Just, thank you for the update, Mr. Rasmussen. I'd just like to note that virtually all of these are in the heart of beautiful, sparkling downtown Bloomington. Those are the only comments that I have. Aldermanic comments. Alderman Black.
I think it goes with some saying that you and I are going to be participating in the tricycle race at the Criterion.
We are.
We're racing on Saturday.
Okay, is it on my schedule? If it's on my schedule, I'm there.
Yes.
Okay. It's on, man.
We're at like 1:00-ish.
Hey, this is where short legs come in handy.
I was going to say, does my tall legs have a liability on this one?
It's not as easy as it looked. Trust me, it is not as easy as it appears to be.
Are you, are you in?
I did it last year.
Oh, you did? Okay. Will you, will you remind me what time I'm supposed to be there? I'm going to look at my schedule.
Matt Hawkins is here.
I'm there, I'm there.
I think it's 2:00. I'm not sure.
2:00 for the tricycle. Okay.
Is the reigning champion defending his title?
Is the reigning champion defending his title?
They didn't want me back.
You, you, oh, you're the reigning champion?
Yes.
If I win, it's on, dude. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for reminding me, 2:00 PM. 2:00 PM. Alderwoman Howman.
Thank you. I'm just, not right this minute, but would like to ask for an update on the Boys and Girls Club property and where we stand on that.
Mr. Rasmussen, do you have anything?
Yeah, we do have that on our schedule of proposed upcoming events, and it keeps moving back, so we don't have a specific date, but Jeff was working with the lawyers there, and I think maybe I'd ask for him for an update. What do, when do you think we might be able to bring something forward?
Very soon. We're all getting together again. We're going to be meeting and talking about the busway to proceed with it, but it is progressing, and we anticipate it bringing back to the council soon. My guess would be the next, yeah, next month or two would be our hope.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right. And just for the record, Alderman Black, I do have it on my calendar, at 1:30.
1:30. There you go.
Yeah. I'll be there at 1:30, and then you tell me what to do. Anybody else? Okay, at this point, is there a motion?
Closed session.
Oh, that's right. Do we have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the items that are listed under number 12, claim settlement?
And if I could make a note, Mayor, we'll do that downstairs in the legal conference.
Actually, the mayor's.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to do it in my office, and just so that, and we're not coming back...
To take action, we'll come back in adjourn.
We'll come back in adjourn. If you'd like to see us come back in adjourn, you are certainly welcome to do so, but we're not going to be coming back and taking any other action. Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss the items under number 12?
Moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Howman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Bray. Okay. Madam, oh, excuse me, we don't, if you just go ahead and vote electronically, that'll save the clerk's voice. The motion carries nine to zero. Okay.